There we go, okay. Let's call this meeting of, I don't even know what date it is, Wednesday, February 11th, to order 6:06. Okay, so we have on our agenda three items. In those three, we can go, since we have the mayor here, we can talk about the first one, which is, look what we had, hold on a second, I don't have to what it's called.
Pay plan?
Uh, yeah, classification of pay plan and position titles. So, now, I remember you came and told us a little bit about this, it was basically, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a way to be able to generalize specific clerks, so you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be stuck in a certain pay plan in order to be able to hire somebody.
Right, this came about when, actually when I was going to hire an assistant to replace me. And, you know, we have the pay plan that's very specific, and they're graded with a, you know, with a title. So, when I wanted to, you know, advertise for the position and interview, that was the only position that I could have hired. So if I had wanted to, you know, change it, change, you know, like not have that specific grade, or have it be, you know, you know, just a, anyway. So what happened is Barbara and I ended up looking at, you know, looking at our classification plan, thinking that it must, you know, we have clerical positions which are fives, we have assistant positions which, you know, most of them are sevens, and that, you know, I could just do a clerical if I wanted that, or an assistant if I wanted that, or what my position was. So, when we looked at it, it's like, ooh, they're all tied. Like, these, most of the, all of the sevens that are, most of the assistants are assistant dash treasurer, assistant dash auditor, assistant city clerk. They're all tied to a specific department. So even if I wanted to hire somebody like that, I couldn't.
So there's no floating assistant, there's no general assistant?
Exactly. So I thought, jeez, do you know what, I, for my purposes, I ended up just doing exactly, you know, what was, what was available to me. But it brought up a question like, jeez, well, jeez, if I didn't want that particular position, I can't hire anybody like that. So I thought, wouldn't it be good for in the future, for future uses for any department, to have just basic, you know, the clerical, the assistant, just basics that aren't tied to anywhere? Or, you know, leaving it up to your committee if you wanted to just remove, you know, how they're all tied now? Because all the positions are there, they're just tied somewhere.
Right.
You know, we have the clericals in DPW, and, you know, like, they're all just, they're all very generic. And like the job descriptions, obviously, for that department would reflect that it's for that, you know, obviously, that you would want the, if you were hiring this, and say they're just all this, uh, general assistants, if you were hiring one for the treasurer's office, it would be a different description than if you were hiring one for the, for the planning department or the city clerk. You know, that would be where their job description would, you know, have the different duties in it.
Right, and there's no, there's no position now that has a sliding scale. So you couldn't, like, right now, we don't have an assistant that is, has a range like five to seven.
No, no.
Right, so there's, right now, there's no precedent for that.
That's right.
But there could be.
Well, I hadn't even thought of that, to tell you the truth. I mean, I wasn't given anything I thought of. I just thought of a, an assistant that's a seven that just isn't tied to a specific department. I hadn't even thought of that.
Because I mean, if you think, if, if they're generally in a range of five to seven.
Well, they're not. The assistants are almost always sevens, and the clerks are always fives. They don't call them clerks though anymore.
They're principal clerk?
Oh, they do, they still do.
Ten principal clerks.
Ten principal clerks.
Right, but they're all tied.
And they're all tied to specific departments. It's more specific.
If it's clerk council on aging, plan error, assessor, tax.
Right, so in other words, there's not one in the mayor, like, so in my department, mayors, I couldn't have hired, say, I decided, you know what, let's just start off with a five. Uh, you know, I, I think I'd be good with just a-
With a basic assistant.
I'd be good with just a clerical assistant. Um, you know, I'd be great with just a principal clerk in my office, which is a grade five. I, I couldn't do that.
Right.
So I had to hire for somebody which was my position, which ended up fine, but it just brought it to light, like, jeez, maybe we should look at this for the, for the future.
So, would, do you think, is, would there be a, you know, any, any sort of benefit to having a general assistant position that could go to any department with some sort of a sliding scale, or would we wanna tie it? You know, so if you hire someone that doesn't have much experience, they might be a five, or if you hire someone, I mean-
But if you go higher, if you would go to a higher level, you could, it would be like assistant, you know, it-
So it's, it's, so it's in semantics.
Right, it would change the grade.
I have a-
The responsibilities obviously change the grade.
I, I have two questions. Are you anticipating having someone that would be task-specific, that once that task is over, that job would be done? Or are you saying, you know what, we have a lot more work than we initially thought, so for the next year or forever long, we can continue this funding? It would be really helpful to have an additional clerk?
Exactly. Now, what you just said, the, you know, the end of what you just said, exactly. Now, say for instance, I thought, oh, jeez, this is, this, like, we're just bombarded. I need, I need a basic five just to, you know, do the phones, do the filing, just like, just straight clerical, you know? And share it, share that person with person, you know, with, like, right down the hall. I could share that person with three different offices. But if it's just called a principal clerk, perfect. Doesn't matter, you know, where you use it, and, you know, float it around, that type of thing. Exactly. It'd be very beneficial.
Okay, the second question that I had, and I wanna make sure that I understood this right. One of the considerations we're thinking of is to get rid of the designation of the existing clerks and assistants?
I just thought that might be something that's up to, you know, to your, you know, your committee, if you think that you would be interested in, in doing that, and then they would all be, they would all just be, you know, assistant, principal clerk, just not tied to the department. You know, that would be your discretion, what you thought fit best.
Well, I think that makes more sense. I mean, it's similar to something that we've done in the schools previously. Instead of creating another category that's just general, now you've got somebody who's, and I'm gonna say a clerical, but a clerical in the special ed office can easily be shifted over to the superintendent's office for a week to do mailings or something else. It doesn't have to be, oh, well, that's clerical, special ed, clerical superintendent, clerical principal. No, it's just, you're clerical.
And I understand-
Exactly.
I understand that for the overflow person. But to take every position and get rid of that designation, my concern is that, let's say for example, the senior center. If suddenly that person was not tied to the senior center by the title, I could imagine that causing a lot of distrust and concern, not, and I just chose the senior center as an example. But when you have some departments that have more funding and more positions than others, I think then the claim that, well, at least we have these people. If you take away that title, I'm concerned that that could become very territorial.
But the title is assistant. It's not, you know, it doesn't need to be assistant auditor.
Most of the principal clerks, like DPW, where it says principal clerk DPW, they don't say, I'm, my title is principal clerk DPW.
But their title, their title itself, it's just, they're like dash, and they're tied to that department. And I'm not interested in floating people from one department to another. What my interest is, take, okay, so for instance, take, you know, and I was just using it as an example, using my office, if I did not want to hire, and they're, and these jobs are graded, you know, as you already know, they have a grade, so most of them are sevens, fives, well, nine, eight, sevens, fives. So say for example, I wanted to hire somebody, which, you know, didn't come up, I had to hire a nine. What if I thought, well, jeez, you know what, I don't really think I need right now that, I don't really think I need that, that level of responsibility, or, you know, maybe some parts of this job, um, they're not going to be, come in with that type of responsibility. I'm not saying get rid of the nine, but I could not hire anything other than the nine for my office. You know, which, it, it ended up working fine, that's not the issue. The issue is it just came, you know, came to our, came to our mind like, ooh, jeez, you know, well, it's a good thing that's what we're hiring, because we don't have a choice. You know, without a, without an ordinance change.
Here's another question. If we decided to detach the principal clerk and assistants from the specific departments, does that mean that the expectation of those positions within those departments could be shifted? So, you know, for example, since it says principal clerk DPW, well, if there was no principal clerk DPW, and, you know, someone, whoever decided, well, you know what, we don't really feel like the DPW needs a principal clerk, so we don't want them to have it, and now it doesn't necessarily exist, so we're just not gonna hire that person. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It makes a lot of sense.
So, so my question is, you know, are these, are the departments gonna feel like, you know, if we change this, that we're trying to remove positions from their departments that have been allocated to them? Even if it's just by name?
That's a really good question.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, exactly. And I, I don't think that would happen, because, as, okay, just using again, the city auditor. She only has one position in her office. So she definitely knows that she will be allocated a position, because she doesn't have any, she doesn't have one. But if, in some time in the, in the future, she wanted clerical help, maybe a part-time, maybe just a part-time clerk, well, she can't hire it.
Right.
Because she doesn't have that in her office.
A lot of the jobs are changing as technology changes.
Sure.
So a lot of them where it was a lot more responsibility.
Now, some of the positions have become almost like data entry.
Right.
And sometimes the other way too.
So, you know, you don't wanna be paying a nine where that was responsible for-
Could be made with fives.
Or what if you wanted to fives instead of one nine? Or a five and a half? I, well, I don't mean a five and a half. A full, a full-time five and a part-time five. Can't, can't do it.
And so, so is your, I guess, let me ask, is your proposal, would your proposal be to eliminate all principal clerk and assistant positions as they are in the pay plan? And to add a new principal clerk at, at five, and assistant at seven? And are there any other ones that we would be adding?
We're, I'm looking at dispatch now, because right now, for example, dispatch has the permanent, and they have on-call. But technically, they're not on-call, they're part-timers. So what we'd like, what we're, I'm potentially looking at is suggesting three categories. Permanent, you know, the full-time, part-time, and then a true on-call. You know, the, the bank of people that if we have somebody call out sick, they can just call that person in for one shift.
Right, and so that would, that would be through the public, through public safety, as public safety dispatch, this, publics-
Right, dispatch is part of pay plan.
Okay, yeah, okay. I mean, it, it makes sense. You know, have you guys, and, and maybe you just haven't gotten to this point, but written up your, and I can't remember if what he gave us, it didn't, it didn't spell out what we're talking about right now, did it?
No, I, I think I just wanted to, like, initiate conversations. And I just really want your input.
Sure.
And, you know, what, what you think, and, you know, like, where I'm going with this, and what you think would, would benefit, you know, the, you know, the pay plan.
Sure.
But I think so that, if you were to hire somebody that is not already put with your position, you wouldn't have to go, you know, for a whole different ordinance change at the time.
Right.
You know, and, and it's not to eliminate positions, it's just to have, have them there when needed. Or, you know, if, if responsibilities change, and you don't feel that it warrants, you know, a nine isn't warranted, but a seven is perfect for that position, you know? Or you might wanna do, instead of a nine, you might wanna do a, a seven and a four, you know? But, you know, different ways, little flexibility.
It seems completely reasonable. To have that, to have that flexibility seems completely reasonable.
With no intention of changing anybody. I'm not interested in changing all our assistants now, not related to that.
I would say, you know, from, from my perspective, probably the next step would be for, for you guys to write up exactly what you want the positions to be called, and what grade you want them at. And, you know, for example, the dispatch ones, and the principal clerk, and the assistants, and send, and then send that to us.
Okay.
And then, then, you know, once we have that piece, then we can, you know, look at that, see, you know, I mean, I, I don't know about you guys, but to me, it seems pretty reasonable to have that flexibility. And so, once we see that, then we can say, all right, well, here's what we have in front of us, what do we think? And then go from there.
Start from there, and say, that's great, we'll just add some generic ones, or we'll add generic ones and remove the, you know, the limitations on there. And, and it's totally up to you. Like I said, the intent, just so you know, the intent is right now, obviously, I think you all know, there, nobody's hiring anybody.
Right.
But, and the intent is not to change anybody that is existing. I'm not thinking, well, jeez, you know, I have some sevens-
You wanna get rid of this principal clerk.
Yeah, I have some sevens, and I, you know, and they're tied to departments, and I wanna get- there's no intent at all. This is just something for in the future, so that it would be available, you know, in future hiring, or, you know, things like that.
And the job descriptions would be office-specific.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They would have to be, right.
So even though they would all be principal clerks, there would be a job description for principal clerk in the health office, or principal clerk in DPW.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
No problem.
You all set on another one?
So you guys got my email.
Before I move on, though, I was just, I'm really curious to see what the other departments would say about it.
Well, we can, we'll, we'll definitely get their input.
Yeah, I, like, I, I just, I can see intention going so different from the effect, and I just wanna make sure that we're being cognizant of the facts.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, yeah, that's why I asked, because I mean, you could potentially say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna change all these titles, and, you know, and then try to modify people into those things, and maybe downgrade them, or, you know, whatever, so.
That's what I'm concerned, there could be a labor, a law, a labor suit that, you know, I, I just don't know.
But, and, and so when we look at it, we can look at, well, it doesn't make sense, so, you know, keeping those specific things, and then adding a general, you know, a general, general clerk, general assistant.
Yeah.
You know, so it doesn't, but that's, we'll get that when they send it, and see what they say. Yeah, so, I might have printed it right out of ink, so I wasn't able to print it, but I have it. You haven't got multiple copies?
Just one.
Oh, I have it right here? We have Wi-Fi in here. Okay, so-
Which one are you looking at?
So this is the LED.
All right.
So this is LED sign, and so, you know, with that whole thing, you guys saw my first draft of this.
It was a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, and so I tried to, I tried to tighten it up and make it just way more simple. And so, ignore this first part for now, the definition change.
Sure.
Because that, that was something, that was something kind of ancillary to the main LED sign ordinance. And so, what I wanted to do is add the definition of a service station LED sign, which is a sign that displays the price and cost of a fuel product. And then the amending the ordinances, and it would have to, we'd have to, like, re-letter.
Right.
Because it would go between K and L. But right now, there's no, like, and it doesn't make sense to make it like K, A, or L1, or anything, it doesn't make sense to do that. So we'll have to, we'll have to re-letter the whole, that whole section of the ordinance, which is no big deal.
No big deal.
So it's a service station LED sign, it's a sign that displays the price and cost of a fuel product, can be any color as long as they meet the other requirements of this ordinance. Now, before, one of the things, I had included that it has to be red or green. I, I started doing research, there's amber ones out there, there's, they're different colors, and I was just like, well, it doesn't have to be red or green, it doesn't, like, it doesn't make any sense, so. I, I, I just, I, you know, I, I, we could always add it back in if we wanted to. But for me, it wasn't, it's not a, it's not a deal-breaker. Like, I didn't, I didn't care. What do you, what do you guys think about the color?
No, I mean, I thought about it too, but I, actually, I was looking at the two pieces, because you're wise saying, any color up here, and then back down here, we have background screen can only be black.
Right.
And I'm thinking, well, you know, what, the signs aren't flat. So by any color, are you talking about trim around it? You know, that could be blue, or something else like that? So I mean, that's how I took it, is the actual sign could be, you could have, you know, F. L. Roberts, and in yellow and orange, and then, but the background is gonna be black.
The background, so, and, and so, and, and, so the specifics of the sign, it's, you know, it's the, the piece of this that we're talking about is the piece that actually fits in the LED part.
Yeah, LED part, right.
So the sign can be any color that conforms to the, which is basically any color. But when I know, when I looked at the different colors of signs that are available, they come in amber, which I think racing mark is amber, it's like a yellowish. And then there's green, there's red, there's purplish, and there's even white.
As I say, the white is the only one that I think could bring, like, the state concerns, because it's such a bright white.
Which is why, I've, I've never seen a gas sign that's white, the letters, because I think it's probably too, like, washed out or something.
But I just think that it's a little redundant if that's what it's referring to, is the letters.
Yeah.
Because it says, can be any color as long as it meets the other requirements of this ordinance, color. All lighted LED numbers, they'll be any color. And it's just like, you know-
Yep, so we could, we could do that. We could change that. We could, well, I just could just take that sentence out in the first section. And so then, now, this is one that I wanted to talk to you guys about, because, so it's, permanent ground-mounted sign. So this doesn't allow for them to put awning signs, which some places, you know, it's like signs that are on the actual awning of the, I don't even know if that's a right term. No, it's like the, like, that's the roof.
Right.
They can mount them to the edge of the roof. This is for, like, existing signs, you know, that they're gonna retrofit. For the purpose of advertising fuel costs, LED numerals may, and this is the one I wanted to talk about, may not exceed 12 inches in height. Now, they go up to like 48 inches.
Yeah.
But, and, and, and I think eight inches is the smallest. And then, you know, so I was kind of wavering between 12 and 16 inches. And the bigger they are, obviously, the further away you can see them. And we don't have a lot of service stations in town where you're gonna be super far away. Most of them are in, you know, smaller, more, the only one that I can think of where you can see it from further away is R-10.
I think in the mobile station there.
And, yeah. And then the other ones that are kind, there's one other in town.
San Diego.
Yeah, and-
Was there any standard with 12 and not 14?
No, that's the thing, it's like, they come in, they come in eight, 12, 14, 16, I think maybe 14, I don't know. I was, I went through about 10 different sites of manufacturers for these things. And, and it seemed like the standard was either 12 or 16 inches, for like, you know, most uses. I just went with 12, because I figured that was-
I guess the only one, what is that called, 7-Eleven? Their gas letters seem to be-
Bigger?
Bigger than anyone else. So I could imagine them at, if they ever did update to LED lights, asking for an exception.
A figure, yeah.
Just because they're existing, if we're-
Existing one is bigger?
Yeah.
And I wonder, I mean, is that, is that, like, are we, do we wanna say from eight to 16 inches? Like, do we wanna give a range?
I wouldn't put a, a minimum, I would, but I would go up to 16 inches.
16, okay.
You know, it just, 12 seems to be limited, I mean, I think eight and a half by 11, and putting this out at, at a distance.
Well, and plus, like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I mean, we're doing, one of the reasons why I thought this was important was so people could see more clearly the price, instead of having to squint. And, you know, if it's bigger, you're gonna have an easier time seeing it.
And yet, they're probably, the standard is 12 inches. But, you know, by putting 16, it just allows a little bit of flexibility.
It allows a little bit of flexibility, okay. So that's, that's a reasonable enough change, which I can make right on here, because it's in my Google Drive. And then, okay, so, and then, so we do have the color.
Would you wanna put anything about retrofitting, or anything of that language in the criteria? This is better, because it's not a flooding.
I'd be fine if somebody wanted to put in a brand-new sign.
Yeah, that's true.
It could be grounded.
That would be fine too, I mean, because it might be nicer.
Okay.
And, and, and this wouldn't prohibit anybody from retrofitting their sign to this. So signs may be double-sided, all LEDs shall be, can be any color, the LED screen, and this is the screen behind, so you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have, like, a price. So say it was, you know, $2.03 for gas in red, and then behind, the contrasting color to that would be like, you know, yellow. Like, you know, so, just for that, that's, that's the black background. Must not exceed an illumination of .8. Now, this is where I attach that attachment. Because this, before, they were talking about knit, like, measuring, and, and I didn't understand that. And then I found out that if you wanted to measure it with that, you have to buy a $5,000 knit measuring tool.
Which is difficult to procure, I'd say.
Which is difficult to procure, oh, yeah, that's right, it's in there. And so, but, the, the, by doing it, by the, you know, through the foot candles, it's ea, it's a, like a $200 thing, it's very easy to measure. It's a pretty standard way to measure. And .8 is, you can see is the medium brightness. And, and most of these signs are, it seems like the ones that they're selling now all have a auto-dimming. So as the, as it gets, you know, brighter, the sign gets brighter, as it gets darker, the sign automatically dims. And so, you know, we, basically, this is just measuring at its maximum brightness. It's not talking about during daylight or nighttime, it's just at its maximum brightness.
I think it dawn to dusk or something there.
Did I, I think I, oh yeah, from dawn to dusk.
From dawn to dusk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you're talking maximum brightness?
Maximum brightness, right. And they not, they should-
But dusk to dawn, actually.
Dusk to dawn.
But that's actually, that could be more concerned, though, because if we were talking about, you're gonna have .8 foot candles during the day. It needs to be brightest during the day, to be able to see it.
During the day, yeah.
So between dusk and dawn, right?
So you think it should be from dawn to dusk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you want it to go down at nighttime. So I guess my only other question, and I don't have a standard to rate it by, but do we, if anything, wanna put in that it can't exceed, you know, .5 from dusk to dawn?
Right. Because that's the other, that's like the, the lower setting.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I don't know, I'd have to look again.
How would this go in terms of the city council and actually purchasing that type of equipment? Would ordinance have anything to do with that, or would that be an entirely different procedure?
That would be, then, it would be through the enforcement.
Okay.
You know, so it'd be through the building.
Okay, I just wasn't sure when, when I was reading it.
I mean, it's interesting, because I feel like in our, we, we did put some, some brightness restrictions in the sign ordinance, having every time, remembering exactly what we put in. And it makes me wonder, like, is the, is there a way to measure that brightness? So if, you know, McDonald's sign, if we were like, oh, that, is that too bright?
Yeah.
Do we know, and, and do we have a way to measure that at this moment?
I think, see, I think there is, because when I took my car into inspection, it failed because the headlights were not bright enough, and there was a tool that they used to measure the brightness of it.
That's probably the, the foot candle-
Right.
Measurement tool.
But it, it just seems that, I would, I wish we could just borrow one.
Go to the service station and say, you don't like that type of car.
Yeah, my car is maybe being ruined.
Okay, so, all right, so I'll check on, I'll check on the .5 from dusk to dawn, and I'll switch this one from dawn to dusk for .8. So its maximum brightness would be during the day, and then its lower level would be during the night.
And I had, I had another question to ask you regarding the definition change. And it's because of the term electronic, that my, my concern about the term electronic was if we now have all these LED signs that are being powered by solar energy, would that still be technically called electronic? It would?
Yeah, presumably powered by electricity still.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. And, and I think that would be, that's, that's, and the, that modify, that modification of definition is a little, that's not specific. I should've added it in something else. Because that's the changeable sign, one. And one of the confusions in the definitions was changeable sign, is like, well, what's a changeable sign then? You know, so I thought it would, it would make sense for us to, and the reason why I was gonna do this is because the next phase of this, I'd like to do a, a community sign change. So signs that are for community events, like the Lions Club sign, or the school sign, you know, that they could upgrade to something that is more user-friendly. Like, they can actually display current messages, and, so that's the next phase. So that's, that's jumping the gun a little bit, so, we'll get to that later.
I'd say blow the whole thing off, and just-
Just start wide open?
Yeah, wide open.
I, well, did you guys look at that sign ordinance, I'm not sure. I mean, that thing is unreal, right?
That's, yeah.
With the pictures, and, I mean, it's so clear, so easy, it's only like four pages.
Yeah, see, I really like the pictures.
Unreal, it's like, what, what signs are- Unreal, it's like, what, what signs aren't allowed? Well, here they are.
Basically, you can see exactly what it's talking about.
So if I had known about that ordinance when we were, I would, let's modify this one, because this is, that one's a really good one. It's a model, it's a model sign ordinance. You can tell that they need their own.
Are you, are you suggesting that we do pictures for ours based on East Hampton signs?
I don't know, I mean, if we, it would be an undertaking to root, to go, I mean, even though we have a lot of it done and we could reformat it, and, I mean, that's something maybe we can take on when we have a clear agenda. You know, we can say, here, let's.
One thing at a time.
One thing at a time. So how about this, how about, I'll go, I'll go back and make those, those changes. And, and then we can take a look at it next Wednesday and then, then if, if we're good with it, we'll just move it forward some.
Do you think we're good to move this one forward?
Uh, yes, I think my, my concern is not actually seeing how bright that is. I just wish I had a more concrete example. I don't feel comfortable putting in a very scientific definition of how much light and not being able to know in my mind the equivalent.
Yeah.
Try to find some examples.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, well, or if, I mean, 'cause what I found, the .8 is the industry standard. So that's what the, that's what all the sign manufacturers are designing the signs to. So I would say if you went to, if you went to Racing Mart, if you, that, that, I, I, the people that worked there would probably have no clue. But you can probably find, if you looked at the sign, you could probably find the manufacturer and you could ask them what, how many FC that, that light admits. You know, 'cause like, when I look at that sign, I'm not like over, overburdened with brightness.
Yeah.
I see them all over Hartford and it's not that one is brighter than any of the others.
Yeah, they're probably all the same.
Yeah, the same.
Okay, cool, so I'll, I'll make those, the 16-inch change and the .5 from dusk to dawn change. And we'll go from there. So that brings us to our last thing on our agenda, which is this. Have you guys had a chance to take a look at this any further? 'Cause we have a meeting next week after our meeting.
Oh, yeah.
With the planning board.
I did bring Jessica's copy with me, but when, the last time I looked at the, I don't know. The last time I looked at it, I didn't see it.
I don't put it up, I'm getting my hands.
Do you, what, what phase is the planning board in right now? Have you, they've met and discussed this?
Yeah, so the, the planning board, this is the building size of it, right?
Yes. That's all I'm asking, yeah.
Actually, no, you guys were talking about it tonight, that's why I gave it to the lily. No, so, so they, they had one meeting to, to discuss it generally. And, and so that, kind of heard some, some input, the same night as the other, the meeting you guys had.
Right, that's right.
Simultaneous meeting, so I, I wasn't physically here to attend it. But my understanding was, 'cause Dave Gardner attended it, and my understanding was they discussed it generally, heard a little bit of input from the public and, and then continued the meeting to the joint meeting they're gonna have with you guys next week.
Unless, I mean, if you guys have any, you know, other stuff that you wanna bring up and discuss tonight, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, reviewing everything that we have and then just coming.
Meeting with the planning board.
With the planning board and hatching it out with, in that form. And then, you know, my suggestion would be that if we have any questions, let's formulate those and bring them to that. 'Cause I'm sure you'll be there, right?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yep, it's, it's right after our next council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of good things in there, although the suggestion, exempting one very strict. But, you know, then I do have concerns, they're talking about warehousing space and things like that. And I don't necessarily see that we need large warehouse.
Right, 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 and that's in, within the industrial zone?
Right.
Yeah, 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 for wholesale transportation and industrial. Okay, well, we can.
Certainly see what the planning board has to say about it.
All right, good. Any other things?
No.
All right, let's.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, wait, yes, did you get the meeting notes?
Yeah.
Okay, did, I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting notes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, there we go.
The minutes.
The minutes are approved.
The meeting notes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Any second here?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, guys.